Hey Jamie, how are you?
How are you?
Good, good.
Tag over here already and there you go.
Recording in progress.
Now that I don't have a sweater on, it's warm in here, of course. Because I was so cold earlier.
Okay, hey, good evening, everybody. This is a work session of the Greenbelt City Council. My name is Emmett Jordan. I serve as mayor. I'm joined by my colleagues at the table. Could you introduce yourselves, please?
Jenny Pompey, council member.
I'm not all at once, come on.
Kenny, council member.
Pope, council member.
Jenny Pompey, council member.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim, Kristen Weaver is on travel. I don't know, is she online yet? I know she's gonna try and zoom in, but she, she may not be online just now. So quickly, just, are there any information items for us to discuss later on? City manager Sam Maroon, how are you tonight?
Doing great, thank you.
Fantastic, you got information items for us later?
I have, I have one. The four cities, wanna finalize a date for the four cities meeting.
Okay, any other information items to be shared from council? Okey doke. So quickly, you know, we do hold these council work sessions on Mondays and Wednesdays, several times a month to exchange information with community stakeholder groups and to gather information from staff, advisory boards, residents. No votes or formal actions are taken at our work sessions. Those happen at council meetings. Our work sessions and council meetings are always open to the public, except for executive sessions, as authorized by state law, so that residents and others can observe our deliberations. We do strive to provide reasonable opportunities for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered, and we'll pause periodically for public comment. So this is a double-decker work session here. We're going to be talking with T-Mobile and talking with staff about a proposal to place a temporary, for permit, application for a temporary tower at 211 Ridge Road. And after that, we'll be covering some budget information. We're talking to the planning and community development staff about their, through the, by way of the city manager, with their proposal for the upcoming budget. So because this is a jam-packed work session, we'll pause periodically, maybe every 20, 25 minutes, to take comments from the public. At these times, if you wish to address council or the city administration, to make a comment, you can, if you're in the room, just raise your hand, and after being recognized, you can go over to the podium. Please state your name and where you live in Greenbelt. We need that for the minutes. If you're on Zoom, you can raise your virtual hand, and we'll recognize you after recognizing and promoting you, same thing. Or you can use the Q&amp;A tab at the bottom of the screen to submit a written question. We'll do our best to pick up on that. And if you're watching on cable TV, or on Facebook, or YouTube, you can submit a question to questions@greenbeltmd.gov. That's an email address, and we'll do our best to pick up on those emails. It's a lot to kind of follow. But please, with the public comment, limit your remarks to three to five minutes. Speak on one topic related to the question or consideration. And as always, we ask you to avoid questioning the motives of others, and in general, just please be civil in your remarks. So, as I said, this is, we're gonna cover two topics. And first, we're going to delve into this application, permit application, from T-Mobile to place a temporary cellphone tower at 211 Ridge Road. That's the water tank property. So Mr. Sam Maroon, we're joined by our planning and community development chairperson, Terry Ruby, director. Welcome, Terry Ruby.
Thank you.
And could you introduce Jamie?
So Jamie, for your assistant director of planning. And then Timothy Dwyer is with MTVC, the program director there, and he's here on behalf of T-Mobile. We requested that they come and present their permit application to the city. It's a, the location is going to be just outside the fence line of the water tower site, and it will be infringe a little bit also on our public right-of-way. So this is a combination of a permit to build on our property, as well as our neighboring right-of-way, that we have jurisdiction there. As you indicated, it's a temporary water tower, it's a hun- I mean, a temporary monopole. It's 110 feet tall. It is slated to be there as for the duration of the water tower rehabilitation, or we also call the standpipe rehabilitation project that WSSC is tentatively scheduled to present to city council on May 20th. That project is anticipated to take about 18 months, so that's, I would assume this would be there a little bit longer, getting it set, installed prior to them beginning their work. They currently have equipment on top of the water tower now. That equipment is required to be removed for the standpipe project, so this is a temporary replacement of that. And then their intention is to then install it back on to the water tower. So I've asked Timothy here, there's a plan, we can show you the location. He provided sort of a photo of what that would look like, as well as a coverage map that he can walk council through, because I do apologize, I know the resolution was not very good in the packet, so we have better resolution that he can walk you through and answer questions and so forth on that. So I thought we could start with that. Again, this is a permit, we don't often bring permits to council, they're typically approved on the staff level, but we made that commitment when we started discussions on the standpipe project, that, understanding the relationship this project has and the height of the monopole and everything, that we would keep council apprised and the community apprised of it as well.
Thank you very much. Well, let's dive right in and take a look at, at the logistics and, you know, the actual, how it's going to look. Tim Dwyer, welcome. It's nice to have you. You've been here to our council work sessions in the past.
I don't think I've ever been to a work session before.
Okay, okay.
But I appreciate you having me.
Okay. Well, hey, so MTVC, that's your?
And NBNC.
NBNC.
It's network building and consulting. We're agents for T-Mobile and other carriers, depending on where we're at. But yeah, today, I'm here on behalf of T-Mobile.
NBC, no relationship to the television network?
Uh, no, I wish.
Okay.
So, I, yeah, sure. So I just, before we go over the map, I'll just give you a little history of why I'm here. So in the, in the fall, WSSC provided notice to T-Mobile that they were rebuilding the water tank, and they needed us to vacate the premises, likely in the summer. I know that's gonna be in front of this council at some point. We needed to get ahead of it, obviously, because we would like to retain coverage in the neighborhood. It's, it's a very thick residential neighborhood, as you know, in Greenbelt here, and there's no real other options in terms of providing coverage to that neighborhood, other than that cell site on the water tank. So losing that cell site would be a significant hit, in my opinion, to the residents and to Greenbelt in general, because a lot of people, obviously, use their cell phones as their main form of communication these days, as landlines have ceased. So we wanted to make an attempt to serve the community, serve the coverage, and not lose it when WSSC does a rehab project. We met with WSSC on-site in October. They gave us a very narrow location of where we would not get in the way of the construction activities. That is the location that we proposed, and I understand it is outside of their lease area, but on Greenbelt property, and then into the right-of-way. We proposed 110-foot monopole for two reasons. Number one, we need height to get over the water tank, to cover the area past the water tank. If we just, you know, there's, there's a sector of antennas that go right into the neighborhood, and if we, if we're not higher than the water tank, we'll just shoot right into it, and we won't provide coverage. The other reason is, T-Mobile has very limited assets available to deploy. One of the assets that was available was 110-foot monopole that fit our needs here. The monopole is ballasted, meaning it doesn't penetrate into the ground, it lays flat, and we put ballast blocks on top, concrete blocks, to weigh it down. That way, it doesn't need to drive into the soil or anything like that. We are proposing a retaining wall because of the slope in the area to the right. I don't have the direction, but if I'm looking at it from the access road, it dips down near the right-of-way, so we need to build a wood retaining wall, about five feet, with posts that go in, just to make sure that we deal with the slope, because it needs to be on a flat surface. So that is basically what we're doing. Again, we're taking our antennas, we're not doing anything crazy, we're just taking our antennas and moving them to the monopole to retain coverage. The equipment location is not in the construction area, so our related equipment that powers the antennas is remaining where it is currently in the WSSC compound. So if, that's basically the, and also, let me add one more thing. We, we talked to Terry in the beginning of this, and we obviously went to Prince George's County. I spoke to some people there, and we went to MNC PBC and got a mandatory referral for this, to avoid any zoning through Prince George's County. So we can go directly to tower committee and building permit through PG County, followed by the Greenbelt permit as well. And I'll take questions, and we can look at the map, and I can explain this as well, if that works.
Okay, a couple of questions first.
Sure.
So with the 110-foot monitower, that's gonna, that's gonna be higher than the water tower. Will the antenna be at the top, or will it be on the side?
The antennas will be at 105 feet. So the top of the antennas will be, like, if the monopole is this steel structure, the top of the antenna will be at the top of the monopole. So the top of the antenna will be 110 feet, our rad center, the middle of the antenna will be at 105, so.
Power and the range of the, is it gonna be the same antenna?
Same, exactly. We're not changing any equipment, it's literally taking it from the water tank onto the, onto the monopole.
Just in terms of the construction, ballasting, and how, how long will it take to do the installation, and what logistics, 110, that's a, that's a pretty long truck. So is it 110 feet, so they're gonna bring it up ridge?
It's usually in sections, you can, you can do it in sections, meaning it's usually, there's two sections to the monopole, so it can be brought in a truck, and then, and then it's lifted by crane up, and then kind of stacked, so to speak, if, for lack of a better word. So well, so in terms of construction, the construction duration is anywhere from one to two weeks. It will be relatively, I think it'll be in the week range, only because we don't have to do any equipment relocation, it's only the antennas. So it'll be about a week for them to stack the monopole, place the ballast blocks, and then crane the antennas from the water tank over to the, the monopole. We obviously like to keep our cranes, our crane work within a day or two. So usually, we'd probably, probably, I would say with this project, it'd be about a two-day crane. But in totality, I think about five business days would be the construction duration here.
Okay, so the crane would only be on-site for two or three days?
Yeah, that would be the ideal way to do it. Usually, we don't like, since cranes cost a lot of money to keep on-site, we don't like to keep them on-site more than a day or two. But given that we need to stack the, the monopole, and then remove the antennas from one place and put them in another, I would say two days.
You said the pole would be assembled, like, laying flat somewhere?
Yeah, it would, it would.
110 feet?
Exactly. It would probably be brought in in a truck, and then they would crane the first piece up, and then, and then drop the second piece on top and bolt it in, and then place the ballast on, on the bottom.
Okay, we'll take a couple more questions, and I'd like to hear staff's report or information. See, see the diagrams. Mr. Roberts, and then Ms. Pope.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So how, how, how high above the water tower is 110 feet? How high is the tower?
The tower's about 80 feet.
Oh, 80 feet.
Yeah, and the, 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 obviously, the temp tower is 110, so we would be at 105 at our rad center, so it's a.
It's 80, so the top of the antennas now is probably, what, 95 or?
No, actually, the water tank is actually higher than the antennas are, on the tower itself.
Short ones.
Yeah, so the, the top, I think the water tank is like, goes like this up top, and then, and I think, I believe on the water tank currently, I'm not sure who owns it, there's a dish antenna that goes well above the water tank, that's not ours, I think it's either WSSC's.
The city of Greenbelt has a something, you know, transmitter on there.
That might be.
But what I'm really concerned about is, who's getting the revenue from this?
It's a good question. You know, not T-Mobile. So I, I, and that's a good, a good point, Mr. Roberts, and I'll bring this up. So we have a lease, obviously, with WSSC, and we pay a monthly rate, and we don't get, based on work like this, rehab work, we're forced to go out of pocket as T-Mobile and do all this construction work, just to keep our site on air. So we, we're not getting a break in rent, so I, I don't.
Well, if you're, the thing is, you're on our property as it is. The water tower itself is on the city, belongs to the property of the city of Greenbelt. So we really should be getting that revenue that they're getting. They shouldn't be getting that. WSSC should not be getting that revenue. And now you're moving on to what you're acknowledging.
Sure.
Is our property. And so the revenue better come to the city of Greenbelt. That's all I can say.
I don't, I don't disagree with you.
Because 110 feet is a lot of pole. I mean, that's gonna be, yeah, what I'd like you to do is somehow go up there, maybe put a balloon up or something, and let people see how high that's gonna be, because, you know, maybe some people will be shocked. You know, if it's a temporary thing, you know, we can live with it. But I want to make sure the revenue is going in the right place.
And listen, I don't disagree with you at all. You know, I, I hope that, I'm assuming WSSC is here shortly.
They are, and I will say, they do have an agreement signed by the city that entitled them to lease that space to T-Mobile back from 2003.
And who'll approve that?
Reexamining that, that permission in light of this rehabilitation project, and we're, staff is committed to do that, but they, they do have permission currently from the city to make that revenue.
And, and who, who gave that permission?
That was issued by Celia Crays.
But not the city council?
I, I can't, I couldn't find any history, I don't know what led up to that, that approval. I've tried to look at minutes, and I haven't seen anything that.
Looking into the whole thing.
Leads me to believe you made action, so.
So we're gonna, we're gonna hear something about, you know, what the outcome is of?
We're gonna have those discussions, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, Mr. Roberts, we're, we're on the same page on this one, that we agreed that we should be getting part of that revenue, if not all of it, because it is our property, so we're gonna go back to WSSC and renegotiate this. And I, I couldn't find anything on a, on a council approval, so if that did not come through council, I apologize.
Well, you wouldn't have been here when Celia Crays was here. Yeah, well.
Accepted.
Thank you, thank you, thank.
I, I don't ever remember it coming through the city council. So I don't know how legitimate that agreement is, and how long is it supposed to last, forever?
There was not a time limit on it, but like I said, we're committed to have that discussion.
I mean, that's not a legitimate contract.
Before the antenna goes back there, you know, we can, we'll work that out, staff will work that out. Ms. Pope?
Yes, thank you. Well, me, telecom user. I'm very glad that we have an antenna, so I think we have a lot of issues here in Greenbelt anyways, with reception on, on, with other carriers, but, you know, throughout the city, we really have some dead spots here, and, and, and people are always, you know, we get many complaints about that. So I'm glad that you use, the antenna is already up there, it's gonna be taken down temporarily. How long it's gonna be down on this pole?
That's a good question, I think it's probably more for WSSC, but we're, we're anticipating one to two years.
One to two years.
Yeah, and I don't know their, I don't know their construction timeline.
Construction timeline is 18 months, so hopefully it'll be closer to, you know, 20, probably 24, a little less.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, once they're done, I mean, there might be an opportunity, depending on their construction schedule, for us to get back onto the tank quicker. I just, I don't, until they lay out what their schedule is, it's kind of hard for me to tell. So we just want to retain coverage as long as we can, and then, and we, we don't want this to be up any longer than, we'd rather, much rather be on the water tank and get that asset back for another use, whether it's a special event or something like that, so.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that. I just wasn't clear, you know, how long is it gonna be? Is it six months, a year, so, but thank you for answering that question. My second question is, you know, we, we, when you say, oh, you're putting some concrete stabilizers on there, or weights, I hope they're very heavy, because we're getting some high winds here, right? I mean, we really have some, when the storm comes through, our trees go, and it, it can be quite brutal. So I just want to make sure.
Oh, no.
That, that, that tower is gonna be safe.
Yeah, and that's, and that's obviously a huge point for us. You know, we have preliminary construction drawings with structural engineers. These will be reviewed by Prince George's County, as well as Greenbelt. So, you know, we're gonna go through all the, the normal course of business and motions through the county to make sure that everyone's reviewing it, there'll be inspection. These are pretty common towers these days, and the ballast is very heavy, and they stack it to the point where it can't go back or forth. So I, I'm in agreement with you, but we'll make sure we're above board and we're getting all the reviews done the right way. Absolutely. Yep. Thank you.
Let's do a couple more questions from council, then let's look at the diagrams and talk about coverage, and see the maps and everything, because, you know, we've got questions, comments from a member of the public, which we probably won't delve into that deeply, but I think they actually pertain to the radiation and whatnot coming from cellphone towers. Yes, Ms. Pompey, go ahead, please.
I was just wondering, so while you are moving the antenna, will there be a disruption of service to, to folks? Okay.
Yeah, it'll be about a, we usually try to keep the outage within a day, but it'll probably be a day or two of outage. And they usually turn up sites around there to accommodate, but we found when we turn the site down, there's not a lot of sites surrounding it that really help out too much.
So will we be able to get, the city be able to get advance notice, so that we can let folks know that there is gonna be a coverage disruption? Okay, great, thanks. So just so I'm clear, the construction of the tower itself, what actually goes into the construction? Will any of the environment around it need to be taken up in order to put the concrete in? Can you kind of walk us through the disruption to the environment?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So this, it's, it's a freestanding tower, meaning the only thing we're gonna need to do to disrupt the ground, essentially, is build a, a wall, like, on the side because of the slope. We're really only affecting roughly about 20 cubic feet, I'm sorry, I have the number here, I had my engineer send it to me prior to this meeting, so I could tell you, now I forget, so let me give you that number in one second. We're only disrupting roughly 20 cubic yards of soil, and those are to put the wood post down to hold the retaining wall up. Everything else is just gonna lay onto the ground, there'll be some slight grating, obviously, and there'll be, and I told Terry as well, when we were talking, we're not, we don't need to take down any trees, we just need to trim some branches, so it doesn't interfere with the water tank as it goes up. So, or, I keep saying water tank, monopole. But, but essentially, it's a minimal impact on the environment surrounding, we, and it's not a, it's not a bad placement of where we need to go. There's other places on the property that would be much more impactful in terms of tree removal and things. So this is actually a half-decent spot, minus the grading that we need to do.
Okay, and then the second question, this will be the only thing that's on this tower? Or, okay, so, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think we talked to WSSC, if Greenbelt needed to add their equipment, we were happy to accommodate, but I don't believe it was.
We're taking our equipment out of service, we don't use it any longer.
Okay, so in terms of the environmental impact afterwards, taking the concrete down, would you re-landscape, or how, how would you rehabilitate that 20 cubic yards?
Yeah, our, our goal, obviously, is to bring the area back to how we left it, and that's the, the goal. I don't know if it can, you know, we can plant grass, and we can come to an agreement if, if it works, I mean, I mean, I've been out to the site, it's pretty much weeds and trees out there in the area that we're in, it's not very, it's not landscaped area, is my point, so, but we're happy to bring it back to a place where you guys are amenable to, I, it's, it's up to you, we can, we're happy to plant grass, or seed, or anything you need us to do, because you're accommodating us. So it's really up to the council and the city, if, how they want us to handle that.
And we typically condition our permits for restoration back to existing, and there's opportunity or something that, you know, to enhance it, perhaps sometimes we can work compromises there. I do believe it's a 30 by 30, though, crushed stone area?
Yes.
Yes, so, you know, we would, that would be removed, and then we would restore it, usually just seed, mulch. But one of the things, we just received the temporary, the preliminary construction drawings, so part of our building permit review will be to walk the site with the arborist, ensure that there's no, excuse me, undesirable impacts, and then also develop a remediation plan that would be part of our permit conditioning.
So let me, the contract with NBC, so you actually own the, the tower or the antenna, or does T-Mobile?
T-Mobile.
They own the antenna, and you own the tower, and you?
T-Mobile owns the tower.
When it goes back on the water tower still, you have a role in that?
Yeah, so essentially, we would, you know, we would, so NBNC is hired by T-Mobile to manage projects like this, and all sorts of installations, and essentially, we'll be working with the city, obviously, through construction, and, and WSSC. We manage construction as well, with the, with the general contractor that we hire to do the work, when the tower goes up. And then, once WSSC's done, they'll notify T-Mobile. T-Mobile will come back to us, and we will do the same thing, we'll work to come back on, back onto the tank. And we'll get a permit for that as well, the same way we would normally would through Prince George's County. So you'll be dealing with me, pretty much, the entire time.
So and NBNC has an exclusive agreement with T-Mobile, it's not, it's so other, other wireless companies could approach you and put their infrastructure on your antenna, your tower, or your?
No, this is T-Mobile's tower. I mean, there, there is some hand-holding with other carriers. In situat- like, for example, if this is a situation, if Verizon was already on the, on the water tank as well, we probably would work together with Verizon and their, their agent to figure out how to do this, because obviously, there's only space for one tower. So we could accommodate another carrier if they came along and wanted to go below us, as long as the tower was structurally sound and able to hold that loading. But since WSSC only has one carrier up there, we're here for T-Mobile.
So if another carrier came to you and wanted to put something on this monopole that would move over to the water tower as well, you would be amenable to that, but you'd have to go through the permitting process, and you'd have to come back through Prince George's County and through the city of Greenbelt.
They would have to do that, yeah, whoever, if it was Verizon or AT&amp;T, they would have to go through their process, and, you know, but again, I, and I, these temporary towers are ballast mount, the ballast is important, obviously, for the structural. So do I think it could hold another carrier? Likely, but probably a minimal antenna array, because these temporary towers are not built into the ground, they don't have that heavy foundation that you see on some of the permanent towers that have three carriers on them. So these carriers are designed, these towers are designed for one or two carriers at most, usually. But if another carrier did approach Greenbelt or WSSC and said, we'd like to go here and then go back onto the tower, because I understand you guys have coverage issues, it would definitely be a workable thing.
So I'd like to go to staff, to see if you have any comments, I'd like to actually see the diagrams. Hold on, hold on one second. Yes, but hold on a second, I was not finished. So I really do want to hear staff's impression, and I want to see the diagrams, and then we'll pivot to these questions, there are a whole lot of questions from one or two individuals, and I don't want, I want to actually see the entire presentation before I pivot to all those questions. So Mr. Roberts, is that okay?
Well, I was just wondering, are you gonna be infringing on the, on the Joneses' property back there?
No, we're just infr- we're on the Greenbelt property outside of WSSC's lease area, and then we're infringing very, I think it's minimally, I don't, it's like, what, very minimal, four or five feet into the city of Greenbelt right-of-way.
Where are you gonna put your crane at, though?
The crane will go, actually, probably go right into the, it'll be either in the access road or in the driveway.
Well, that's infringing on the Joneses', because how are they gonna go in, how are they gonna go in and come out when your crane is there?
It's, I, I don't, I don't, I, I've been on the site multiple times, I don't know if I'm gonna be, I, I understand that the Joneses' property, I know where it is, but I don't think we're gonna be infringing on it, I mean, I have, if, in order to drive up to.
Well, the little road that goes down through that's paved.
Yeah.
That's their property, so are they gonna be able to drive in and out while you're working?
We shouldn't have any, we, we should be able to get the crane up into the WSSC access road, there's enough room there. I mean, they're, they're bringing in plenty of construction equipment into that road, too. So, I mean, listen, I, I can't speak to construction.
That, you know, you're making the Joneses aware and everything of what's going on, and working with them to make sure that, that you're not gonna block their?
Oh, absolutely, no, I mean, I, I don't wanna, I can't speak to construction logistics, it's a little early, but, you know, our goal here is to minimal impact here, and I, I appreciate that input, because I, we don't want to block any neighbors or anything like that, so we can absolutely notify them as we, as we, if, if everything's approved and we approach construction. You're welcome.
I just, quick question about, when you said you needed to trim brush, yeah? Who's gonna be supervising that, that trimming?
Brian Townsend. We coordinate with public, yes, we do. Yeah, there, there's a meeting out on site and we'll review it.
So let's quickly look at the diagrams and I'd like to hear staff's impression. I'll ask if APB has weighed in on this and then we can kind of, well, because this is a work session and I guess it would come back to us at the next council meeting?
It wouldn't be the next council meeting. If you desire for our advisory planning board to meet, we would have to get it on their schedule. We also, um, just, we just received the preliminary construction drawings ourselves, so staff has not had an opportunity. So, as typical, we will review all that, come back with, you know, what our recommendation is and what our conditions are. But we wanted to just bring the, you know, the concept to you all and so forth and make sure people are comfortable with it moving forward, understanding we still need to dwell into some of the details. Whenever we also, just to Mr. Roberts' point, issue a permit, if there's any infringement on private property, we will put within our permit that you need to coordinate with private property owner before accessing their property as well.
Okay, very good. Let's take a look at your present, the diagrams that are associated with this request. And we'll take a couple of questions. It seems like a lot of the questions are very technical and a little preliminary. And given that this antenna is the same antenna, I imagine that, uh, the same criteria pretty much applies. But let's just kind of go through what you have.
Absolutely. So what you're looking at now is, uh, you can see the site in the middle there. It's, uh, 7 West, uh, 88. It's, um, where that, it's just right in the middle of the screen. You can see the green area, so I'm going to give you a, a quick summary of what the colors mean. Green is what they call in-building commercial. It's the strongest signal. And what I mean by in-building commercial is, if you're in a commercial building, which is usually not often wood, it's something more solid, you can still get cell coverage in the building. So that's the strongest frequency that T-Mobile or any carrier really has. As you look at, uh, yellow, yellow is in-building residential. So most, most residential buildings are wood-built, right? So, the yellow is second in terms of power and, you know, in, in terms of being able to make phone calls or look at data in your home. Uh, the orange is in-vehicle coverage. So if you're in, you're pretty much outside, but you're in your car. And then the last one is blue, is basically if you're outside using your cellphone. So as you see, it, it, if you look in the middle, it goes green, a little bit of yellow, orange, and then blue. So that gives you, hopefully helps you think about it. Again, the green is most powerful, because it's got to permeate within a commercial building. If you look at the next side, so that's us with the existing coverage and the coverage that we will have with this 110-foot monopole. And if you look at this one, this is what happens if we go off-air. Okay, so there is a huge area that will have zero cell service for T-Mobile. And then there's the residential areas, obviously, uh, the Boxwood Village, I believe it's called. Is that correct? You can see that they have some outdoor coverage and some in-vehicle coverage, but you really don't get back to the good coverage that people use in their homes or, you know, even in their cars until you, you get outside that polygon. So, i- this is a really important site. It's why I'm here. Because there's a lot of time, I'll just be honest with you. There's a lot of times where carriers are going to lose a site and it's, they say to themselves, "Well, financially, we'll just go off-air for a year." It's, because they have to make, they have to spend a lot of money to make this kind of thing happen. You can see this is a pretty important site to T-Mobile and to the residents of Greenbelt. So that's why I'm here tonight. So if you have, if I, I can try to answer any questions to this, for this?
Just one, one question.
Sure.
So, on the monopole, uh, will it be aimed and will it have the same orientation? So the, the, the pattern would be, it's not going to be exactly the same, because it's a different location. How, how many yards from the current location will it be on the monopole?
Think, I'm going to estimate, but I think it's probably about 40 feet from the, where the current, um, current water tank is. But that, that, that's not, that's a pretty minimal distance, given what we're doing here. But yes, to answer your first question, it'll have exactly the same azimuth orientation. So the antenna sectors, it, it's very important that they point a certain way to kind of fill in those gaps in coverage, as you can see here, to accommodate other sites. So we will not be changing orientation at all. And the coverage will look almost identical to what you saw on that first map.
Okay. Do you have some other, uh, other questions, other diagrams that you'd like to share?
I do not. This was given to us today. We rushed to get it, so, uh, this is what I have. And this, this pretty much tells the story here.
I mean, in council's packet, there, there are some diagrams on location and we, they're, they're attached to the agenda packet as well. I think we also have a, a photo of what, um,
Kind of go through those quickly.
An example of, of it looks like.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
What, what's the range of the, the signal?
Signal? In terms of how far they can propagate? It, it really depends, like I showed on that coverage. Obviously, the green in-building commercial signal doesn't travel quite as far. But the, um, the last signal, which is outdoor, and usually that's call-to-call. Does, it, a, a call-to-call signal can go miles. The, but as we all know here, most people use their phones not just for calling anymore, but a lot of times for data. Data is much heavier usage, so the green and the yellow really represent data. And, 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 but, you know, could you make a call? Likely. But there's a much more, if we lose this site, there's a much more likelihood of dropped calls if more than a handful of people are using it. So, but you, you can probably go a mile or two.
Not getting the same?
Exactly.
Same signal.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Let's quickly go through the, the diagrams.
Just a photo.
Yeah, if I, if I can just say this, this is the exact pole we're using. This was installed at a DC public school when they were doing renovations. So this is literally the pole that we're using here, or will hopefully be using here. You can see the ballast blocks on the bottom. Obviously, our antenna array is slightly different than this is, because we're, we have nine antennas here, so you'll have nine antennas up top. But it gives you a really good idea of what you're, what you're working with.
Okay, okay. Appreciate that. Those monopoles, they're ugly, but, you know.
Yes, though they're not the prettiest thing, and luckily, it's temporary. Yeah.
Do we have some other?
Scroll up, I mean, I'm sorry, Shania, scroll up, please. And there's some plans just to show, um, I think, you know, this location, I think everybody's familiar with it.
There you go. Right by the water tower. Actually, that's to the, uh, south of the water tower.
Northwest.
Northwest.
Farthest northwest corner you can get.
Okay. Next.
Better view.
It's a better view, okay.
And you can see our equipment is just adjacent. That's already there, the equipment platform. So this is actually a relatively good location, because we're so close to our equipment. We don't need a long power run or cable run to get to the monopole. You can see right now, we have that run that goes to the water tank. It's a, it's kind of metal. That'll be removed during construction and we'll just be able to run right to the monopole.
Let's keep going. It's the monopole, yeah? Thing else?
The monopole?
Okay. Hey, so talking about the, uh, we talked about the environmental impact in terms of the landscaping. But what about, uh, the, the noise during construction? Is that something that is going to be impactful on a ridge and laster mostly? Or will it also be, uh, noticeable for the residents who live behind there? Julian, excuse me, Julian, Julian Court.
Obviously, our goal is to keep, to have minimal impact here. We don't work night hours or anything like that. We'll be working normal day hours. If there's conditions in terms of when we can construct, we're happy to abide by those. You know, there's certain things we can control. Obviously, there'll be some heavy lifting one or two days as, as when the crane's on-site. But, you know, we, uh, other than when we do construction on rooftops, we don't get too many complaints, um, you know, when we're out there in the middle of the day and just trying to take care of business. So, yeah, our, it will be. Our, our hope is that we can keep that, that construction noise minimal. And again, we'll work with the city on whatever you guys feel is appropriate.
Okay, okay. Are there any comments from anyone in the room? Yes, please go ahead, because we've got some online. If you go to the microphone and state your name, and there's 16 questions online, I'm not going to read off the 16 questions, but I will, I will promote the individual so that she can, uh, you know, ask a couple of the questions that are pertinent.
I think some of those questions?
Limited.
Ask to?
To staff?
WSSC when we have the meeting at?
Right.
They're very specific and, um...
Correct, yeah. I can't speak to WSSC.
Have any answers on safety, all this stuff, okay?
Okay, that makes sense. Please go ahead, if you could just?
Yeah, my name is Tom Zeller. I live on 116 Julian Court, which is right to the west, uh, to of the water tower. I just had a question about the, um, the design of the tower itself. So is it going to look like this at the bottom or are you going to put fencing around it?
So, I'm sorry, we can absolutely put fencing around it. It's really, uh, we would probably do a temporary chain-link fence, just for safety. If that's, if that's amenable to the city and to all the neighbors. You know, these, these things, it's not like someone's going to steal it, uh, but, you know. I don't think so, but, uh, you know, it, it would help, you know, if there's kids or something, it would help keep them away from it. There's nothing inherently dangerous. The pegs, in order to climb, are pretty high up. But we'd be happy to accommodate a temporary chain-link fence if, uh, if, if that works for everyone.
Okay.
There's also a five-foot retain, it's, uh, five foot, I think, shorter in a couple areas around the base.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we can show a temporary fence on the, on the plans. We're still in review of these plans to make sure we're covering our bases. But we can add that to the plans for your review.
Okay, okay. And Ms. Scarrato has about 15 questions online. And, you know, I can promote you if you'd like to speak. So if you would raise your hand, virtual hand, we can do that. Let's see, Ms. Scarrato, are you there? Well, what we can do, we can make a transcript of the questions. We can share those with WSSC. WSSC was supposed to have a representative here tonight?
No, WSSC is working on the water stand pipe, so they, they could address questions about the water stand pipe. Otherwise, anything related to the monopole and its locations of earth would be, Timothy.
Okay, okay. Well, we've got some other ground to cover. I don't want to cut off or not allow Ms. Scarrato to, to speak. Mr. Hartman? Okay, Mr. Hartman? Okay.
I can't, because I'm not a co-host.
Mr. Hartman, are you there?
Uh, yes, I am. Thank you. I did have some questions, uh, in addition to the noise level. But, um, the trucks that are going along Ridge Road or Lastner Lane, what kind of, uh, uh, potential damage could there be to the roads? Are they wide enough with parking along both of those roads? How will you maneuver the trucks in and, and what kind of other disruptions could there be along Ridge Road or Lastner Lane?
So, uh, uh, you know, obviously, we're working with a pretty small footprint, as we talked about earlier. But we're going to be in there prior to WSSC starting their construction. So we should have access to the water tank compound and area to park our trucks. We don't usually, you know, come with seven trucks to do something like this. Obviously, the heavy lifting is done during the crane, but most of the time, it's just one crew on-site. So we can either park off-site and come with one truck or use a WSSC, uh, area, the fence area, and go in there and park inside that, since we're not going to be, we're going to be in there prior to them constructing. So, and whatever impact we do make, if there is damage, which I, I would hope that there wouldn't be, we can obviously, uh, correct that damage if needed, but, um, I, I, I'm hoping that's a non-issue.
Well, I'm wondering about not only the parking of the trucks, but them getting up to that location from wherever they're coming from. They're either going to go up Lastner Lane or they're going to go on Ridge. And, uh, so have you, have you scoped out those two routes to make sure that, uh, they can get through? If there's parking on both sides of the street, are you going to restrict parking? In addition to, uh, uh, whatever width? That's what I'm wondering about. How are you going to get the trucks up there in the first place?
So, you know, obviously, the only, I think the major issue is just the one truck that has the crane. That, that's the, I mean, other than that, we don't really have any heavy equipment here. It's really just the crane day where we have to stack the crane. We obviously need to come up Lastner Lane, I think is the best route, because we make that left into the WSSC compound. I don't have all the logistics in construction. Obviously, we're still in the preliminary stages. But it, we will, obviously, based on these comments and your input, we will obviously think this out logistically as we approach that point. And probably the next time I'm here, we can probably have a better discussion on that.
Well, Lastner is very curvy and, uh, parking at both sides. Thank you.
No, yeah, and I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. So, um, let's, I mean, there are so many questions. And this is kind of preliminary. What I'd like to have happen is, you know, can, can, is APB, are they meeting this month? Can they take a quick look at this and maybe, uh, take some additional questions? And when it comes back to council, we can have?
Roll there. So it depends on whether, uh, consultants is available to come and present to them, to them.
Think you'd be able to do that, Mr. Dwyer?
When, what's the date?
I think it's the 17th. Let me double-check. Wednesday, the 17th, it would be at, um, 6:30. Yeah, it would be Wednesday, the 17th at 6:30.
Who was the?
Advisory planning.
Oh, yeah, sure. No, absolutely. I, I live in Chevrolet. I live right around the corner here. So, I'm happy to come and present again if needed. You know, our goal was to make everyone comfortable with this, so sure.
Well, there are always, you know, there are safety, environmental concerns, safety concerns, and just concerns about RF radiation and whatnot. But, you know, there are some concerns about coverage. And having the coverage out for two or three days, you know, we have a lot of people that work from home and not being able to, to access data is a serious issue. They'd have to find other places to work.
Sure. I, I want to state that I am really not allowed to talk about RF radiation, only because it's an FCC requirement for the carriers. Um, I'm, I'm happy to discuss it, um, you know, just layman's terms, but I can't, you know. Obviously, given the height of this tower, this isn't a rooftop. This is, it's really a non-issue here, based on where this is and the height of it. But I'm really not allowed to talk. If we have a lot of health and safety questions, I can't really get in that debate, um, because FCC rules.
Uh, I do understand. Well, uh, thank you for, uh, this preliminary, uh, presentation and, uh, thank you for bringing it to us, Ms. Ruby.
Great. Thank you for your time. It's a pleasure. Hopefully, I guess I'll see you guys in August. Or, um, August, April. It's, it's almost summer, right? After this rain goes away. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the next section of our work session tonight. We're going to be talking about, uh, the planning and community development budget. And, uh, Mr. Samron, do you want to tee things up?
Uh, sure. I think this would be one of the easiest budgets that we will talk through. And you know Terry, and Terry's put together a memo outlining every expense item in the budget. This, this one, this budget overall is a reduction from last year's budget. So I appreciate the work that Terry and her team did to rise to the call when we needed, uh, the team to close the $3 million gap. So Terry and her team worked hard at identifying all their expenses to help the city overall close the budget gap.
Okay, Ms. Ruby, thank you for, for being so responsive. And thank you for your memo. It's concise, it's to the point. We got other questions?
Yeah, certainly, always. Um, and let me introduce Gavolta Carrera. He's our, um, Assistant Director of Community Developments, formerly our Supervisory Inspector, so congratulate him on his promotion.
Yes, congratulations. Yes.
The, the mayor sang him a happy birthday at the employees' lunch in December.
Employees' lunch? What employee's lunch?
What? Again?
It was a holiday, much, yes.
So let's, I'm writing.
Well, you know, I'm just like, okay, what, now what?
He went.
Gets lighted all the time.
One yesterday, no, I'm just.
Not going to come and inspect my condo, it's going to be somebody else.
The inspector day.
Yeah, make sure he's very nice.
Okay, let's go for it. You want to go work through the memo quickly? Or do you want to actually go through this document, which is concise and short? You know, given all the things that planning and community development do in the City of Greenbelt, all the projects, all the meetings and everything else. It's amazing that you could fit this into a mere nine pages.
I actually, the same thought. I commented that to my husband.
How do you do it?
We were asked to be very concise this year, so. I can start wherever you would like me to start.
Start at the beginning. So you got your, your mission here, uh, which is, which is great. You're certified planners, you know, $2 million in grants, over 50 years of experience. Whoa.
Yes, I know. We, when we, when we wrote that down, we, we got a little sick of our stomach. But we're very, I mean, we're, we're very fortunate that we actually, uh, with, with the addition of Ryan and, and Jamie recently, for a, for a department to have three AICP certified, uh, it's something to be proud of. It means a lot in our, um, in our profession. It's something, uh, that's taken very seriously. We have a lot of continuing education credits associated with that. We have a code of ethics associated with that. And, uh, the both of them will be actually attending the national conference next week.
Excellent. Where's the national conference?
Oh, that's so cool. I love Minneapolis.
I have a hard time getting an Uber there.
Public transit.
Public transit.
Public transit all the way.
Why don't we go through the memo?
Sure. So as, um, Mr. Samron indicated, um, our, we have a $12,400 reduction. Our total budget this year is, uh, $1.3 million. We achieved that reduction. One is, uh, just funding the Supervisory Inspector position for six months, so we hope to fill that starting in January. And we've also did a modest reduction professional services, because as we committed to council, as, um, Mr. Carrera is receiving training from our all call, on-call engineers, our hope is that we can be taking on more in-house inspections and construction management. So we, we reduced that, and he has been very active in assisting with the Royal Farms. And he has been very active in assisting with the Royal Farms site, sediment erosion, as well as Hanover Parkway. And we're fortunate that they're very, more complex projects. So he's really receiving some high-quality training from our Charles P. Johnson, who has indicated a willingness to work with us on that.
Nice. That's awesome. That's great.
And I can say, Mr. Cabrera never turns down a training opportunity. And I commend him for that. So, and as you indicated, you have, I mean, we have a plethora of achievements. We actually had to delete many of them to fit them on the page. But you also have our planning work program updated as well that highlights and reports accomplishment or the projects that we're currently working on and some that we have recently completed. Next year, we plan to be even more productive. We're committing, we're increasing our commitment to pursue grants on major transportation projects. And I think you've seen that reflected when we talk about the capital project budget. We're committed to getting our ARPA projects completed. Actually, Jamie has an in-the-field kickoff meeting with Public Works, I believe, this Friday to start identifying the scope of the project so we can enter into a contract with the contractor that Public Works uses for curb and gutter and striping and so forth. And those are projects that were all approved by council. Now, Mr. Sigworth is working on the bus safety and accessibility, which we will be bringing back to council very shortly. We're doing a lot. Mr. Cabrera is really leading this. And so is Mr. Sigworth, our technology and efficiency and using the technology. We currently are building our geographic information systems program finally. It's been a goal of ours, but we finally have a staff member trained to doing that. And he's already started doing some pretty savvy maps for us and informing that maps. And Mr. Cabrera has been building a training program with our Utopia program, while also looking at other products. But his recommendation will be forthcoming on that. But I believe we will looking at staying with our current provider, but going to a cloud-based system, which will allow us to do a lot more engagement, if you will, and public-facing interaction when it comes to our permitting and so forth. In terms of our expenditures, it's a slight increase of $11,800, mostly as a result of proposing to promote our community planner two, one to a community planner two. Mr. Sigworth came to us with over 25 years of planning experience. Unfortunately, at the time, our budget did not allow us to hire him at that level that he's deserving of. He's also AICP certified, so he's currently a community planner one. So we're hoping to award him with, reward him with a promotion to community planner two, which I think is very well deserved, given his experience and his performance to date on the job. So that's really what the increase was, is related to. And then obviously, we have the COLA and merit increases all accommodated within that budget. But as indicated, we were all able to offset that with some decreases in other costs. So we really kept our expenditures in line with last year. And then in terms of revenue, a very slight increase in revenue, we're projecting, mostly just through trends of our licensing fee program. I also preface in here, and if you recall, this was something that came out of council's work session when we had D-PY representatives here. There was a commitment to provide the county, the city, a monthly permitting report. If you recall, we used to receive that report on a regular basis. We just started receiving that report again a few months ago. And so we are hoping that we will see an increase in our building permit revenues. And you can see, they've been steadily decreasing. Some of that is a result of we don't have new multifamily development. GHI has completed a lot of its projects and so forth. But I'm confident that we're going to see a slight increase. Just what we do is we go through that every year, every month, identify those properties that received a county permit but didn't receive a city permit. And then we work with them on getting their city permits. So, no. And then what I, and what I try to do in the middle of the memo really is because I know oftentimes, there's questions, you know, what is professional services? What special programs? So I try to just outline for you in there what those programs, what those fund, budget line items involve. So as you can see, I think they're pretty self-explanatory with explanations, but we have a professional services membership training, various office expenses. And we have a couple of special programs listed. Our metro count is in there. And then, which was what we use for our speed studies that we do in-house. And then we, that pretty much is uniform for both departments. And then we have some hand tools, modest money for hand tools, like we use for noise readers in our gas devices and so forth. Uniforms, all staff within the Department of Community Development have a standard uniform code. So that's reflected in there. And then the membership and training is for various memberships, publications, local conferences. We typically send two inspectors to Penbach. And then we also, Mr. Day, our newest inspector, have budgeted this year for him to attend the fire inspector class.
Okay. Hey, one thing with the budget, with the employee benefits on page 141, they kind of bounced around a lot, so.
That's a direct result of just variations in our staffing levels. As you know, we had a number of vacancies. So obviously, that number declined. We had one employee who no longer, who was once receiving benefits, who went on their spouse's benefits. So it's just a fluctuation, really, in our health benefit participations due to staff levels.
Okay.
One of the things we do with benefits, particularly healthcare expenses, is that we, as part of the budget process, we do an analysis of every employee and what coverage they're on. And we ask, and we use that cost basis for the following year. So instead of a traditional method would be to just estimate it as a percentage of compensation and spread that throughout the organization, we're tying that cost specific to a department.
Okay, that makes good sense.
It's more precise. More work on Bertha.
I didn't give her that. You gave her that work.
That was me.
So, yes, please, wait.
So in line 30, you have, there's a reduction in the professional services, which, well, technically, it's around the same as it was in this year, but it was a $10,000 difference, correct? From $30,000 to $20,000. Can you explain a little bit more about, I mean, the reduction?
That goes to our building, training Mr. Cabrera to take on more responsibilities so we can take some of the responsibilities that we currently have our on-call engineers doing. Right now, we're using all third-party, we were using all third-party inspection services, Charles P. Johnson Associates, for erosion, sediment control, and what we're responsible for in terms of building inspections, which is limited. But with him getting trained, we believe we can reduce that number next year.
Okay. And then one second question, and please forgive me if you went through this again. But I think either in the memo, you had mentioned salaries for six months, and there was a deduction. Can you explain that a little bit? I believe Mayor Protem also might have sent you that question as well.
Yes, he did.
Okay.
So the Supervisory Inspector position, we identified that as one means of our cost savings. But and also, in reality, per our personnel policies, Mr. Cabrera was promoted to the Assistant Director. But per our personnel policies, that, the position that he was promoted from, he, if for any reason, which I do not expect, that he was not able to complete his six-to-one-year probationary period, is entitled to go back to that position. So we're sort of leaving it open. And so our intent is that he was, January will be in a position to fill that position.
And if I may add more context to it, as we were looking to close the $3 million gap in our budget, I asked the senior team to identify cost-saving measures and options that we could execute to close the gap. One of the practices for the city and for other municipal governments is to do vacancy management. What positions or vacants that we can hold off hiring to generate that savings? So we executed that strategy in this position, as we've done in other departments, such as Public Works, police departments, positions that are not, that are, they're needed, but they're not as critical to the service that we could hold off on. The county executive did that as a measure to close the county budget. The county did a hire and freeze for 800 positions. So it's a common practice to do vacancy management to generate savings in both the current year and the following fiscal year.
So what is that going to mean for our code enforcement? We've got so many apartments to inspect. And you talked about the exterior inspections. But in terms of the interior inspections, how are we going to be able to? It's a two-year cycle, right?
No, all, with the exception of Franklin Park, all rental properties are inspected annually. With Franklin Park, and I got Mr. Cabrera to speak to this, but they basically divided it in half. And then, so that every, every year, we do half of Franklin Park with the intent that over a two-year period, they'll all be inspected. And I believe you do 100% of the exterior, though, on an annual basis.
Okay, and we'll be able to maintain that same pace?
Yes, I'm still helping out the code enforcement officers during that task as well, so.
That's excellent, excellent. Hey, and so for a while there, we were doing virtual inspections because of COVID. We couldn't actually do that. Some things that we've learned during COVID about doing virtual, doing some practices, inspections virtually. Is that something, are we continuing on with that to some extent?
Yes, we are. Right now, we're given the options. If they request to do a virtual inspections, we are accommodating.
That's residential and commercial?
Residential only. Commercials, we're still going in.
You know, these budget work sessions, it's really the only opportunity that council has to ask broad questions for updates on different specific projects. And given that we have so many new council members, I thought, you know, I kind of sent forward a number of topics just to get some general updates. And I think it'll be very instructional for council. And also, it just gives us a chance to dialogue about those. Council members, did you have any specific questions on the materials under planning and community development?
Yes, I, Mr. Cabrera is prepared to answer, respond to your questions regarding, you asked for an update on Charlestown North, the status of the complaints around Jane Apartments. And then we've addressed the other two questions you have. So he could provide those updates to you. And then we can delve into some of the planning-related questions that you had.
Go ahead.
I just, just my question, I saw all the questions that come out, right? Can we get a written response to that so we can also post it? Because, you know, so every, so we can actually show the public the questions and answers? Because I'm sure. Questions?
Yes, absolutely. So we have written responses for both sets of questions that came through. I forward the ones from Councilmember Weaver. We've got the second set of questions. We have those written responses. So at the conclusion of the meeting, we'll do two things. Circulate that to council and post it as supplemental material to the work session.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, and council member, did you want to go now? Or do you want to hear the things on Charleston and Jane?
I think it goes back to just piggybacking off of what you were talking about related to Franklin Park and that you're still doing, you're basically splitting up the code enforcement in half. Is that what I heard?
No, the apartments, the units, there's sections, different sections in Franklin Park. So let's say section one through five, they're done one year. And then section five through nine, done the second year.
So how do you keep up when someone calls, for example, and there's a code violation? Is that included in what you're counting for the year? Or is that a whole separate?
Do include it into it, but that's a separate complaint-driven inspection.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I'd like to kind of get an update on Charleston North and Jane Apartments. I see there's a question, though, here. Can you bond until we get that? Or is this about Franklin Park inspections? Yes, I definitely will, yeah. Yes, please.
First of all, thank you for telling us that the Prince George's County is now working with us on a monthly. Jay Davis, Green Bellies, thank you. Thank you for reminding me. I just want to know, are we up to three inspectors, code inspectors now?
Yes.
Okay. And do they, I know I ask this every year, and I know that sometimes we can't get them right away. But the inspectors are supposed to have mobile tablets or laptops. Do they have those now?
We are not mobile. And actually, we are revisiting whether that's our first, our priority. Just, Mr. Cabrera could speak to it, the efficiency of it, but just his experience with other jurisdictions and so forth. We believe there's some actual benefit from allowing them to come back and generate certain things. But we will be working, having a cloud-based system where they can access information in the field. But we're really now focusing ourselves more on improving our public engagement capabilities, if you will, in terms of looking at ways we can, for one, accept online payments, online permit requirements, how we can accept things electronically and so forth. So we've sort of veered away from that as our priority for now.
I won't ask that question again then. But that was one of the questions I was going to ask, was the online permitting and licensing. Are you still trying to work through that?
Yes, we are.
And small cell applications, there's none at this point?
There's none. And last I looked, I want to say there wasn't any in the pipeline. But I should, you remind me that I should look again. Yes.
Every year, usually, you tell us how many bus shelters are being planned to be put up or renovated? Do you have a number?
I don't have a number now. That goes back to our $150,000 in ARPA planning that we're currently doing. So in the next, I'm going to commit to the next two months. Council should be seeing a plan, a list of projects. And it'll include bus shelters, pads, and so forth.
And that, those bus shelters will include solar lighting when possible?
We are looking, yes. Some, we will have recommendations within our spending for solar lighting. The three, the three pilot projects we did have been really well-received. And we're very pleased with them. And so we're hoping, and we actually just met with another company to get a demonstration of what they have available.
That's great. And I saw in some notice that you applied for a grant or several grants to work with our cemeteries to renovate them and bring them up to something that we would be very proud to be able to have. And is, are those grants coming forward?
We submitted the grant application. So we're hopeful that we'll receive it. If we don't, we, there are other programs that we will. We're committed to identifying funding sources for that project and moving along. I know it's been stalled for some quite time. Carrier has been instrumental in identifying opportunities. So I'm optimistic we're going to find a good fit for us in terms of obtaining grant funding for that project. And as council requested, we did extend, expand upon it to include all three cemeteries.
Good. I'm glad. That's one of our projects I'd like to follow.
I would add to that question. We did submit that grant application, and that application is for, it requires half, 50% of matching funds. So the grant application is for a project total of $70,000. Should, we're planning on a worst-case scenario. However, I'm certain that we have fans at the AFA review committee. But if the grant funds do not come through, we have budgeted the $70,000 needed for the cemetery's master plan and the budget.
And of course, there's always the panels, informational panels that always help as well. And my last question for right now, FBI. It's still in Congress, God knows, when they're going to get through everything else. They can't even figure out the budget, but that's okay. Are we being in contact with the state or the county in reference to any kind of planning about the FBI?
Yes, we're meeting on a monthly basis regarding the FBI projects. And the conversations are very depending on the different elements of the project. To your question about the funding, the county budget includes funding for the FBI project. The state budget includes funding for the FBI project. And President Biden's request, budget, the budget that was approved included $200 million for the FBI project. So it's not the full three-plus billion that is needed for the project, but there's money to get, keep the project moving forward.
Thank you very much. That's all for right now.
Thank you, thank you. So let's kind of work through just some updates on general issues. So so much has happened with Charleston North. It was very challenging, just seeing how the situation deteriorated and having the court step in and having receivership set up is very, very significant. So where are we with that transition? And what does that mean for code enforcement there and for the residents in Charleston North? Speak into the microphone a little bit more. It lights up red.
Okay. So since Tarantino took over the property, the major leaks in the common areas have been addressed. And even in the units, minor issues are being addressed. They recently hired two technicians who are addressing minor property maintenance complaints. The security system now is operational. Both staff and the residents are in training on how to use them. The issues with the trash chutes have been resolved. We haven't received any complaints since, I believe, a couple of weeks ago. We haven't received any complaints since, I believe, a couple of weeks ago. The elevator still pending the final inspections. They're trying to get a third party again to come in, make all necessary repairs. And again, we continue to monitor the, the building for all complaints and we, any complaints that we receive, we haven't received anyone lately, but we send inspector day out there.
Are there any other special accommodations that, that we're providing? I know at one point we had to do some things just to help with picking up the trash and things and so.
We haven't done that. So again, Tarantino and Sal, Thomas and Matthew, who I've been in contact with, they are doing everything necessary to take care of the property. So Public Works hasn't stepped in since, I believe, the snow, snow removal.
Trash trucks coming in there, so.
Right, yes. The trash trucks are operational, bulk pickup is being done.
Communication with the residents, from, from your perspective, Tarantino, the, the receiver that's been appointed by the court system to take care of property management, are they communicating?
Yes, they are. They're communicating with Matt, who's the primary contact for the onsite property manager. So the communication's been, you know, back and forth with them and with Ms. Ruby and myself.
Excellent. Ms. Pope?
Yeah, you said they hired two maintenance workers. Are they in the building at all times?
Yes, to my understanding, they're, they hired specifically to maintain the property. Correct.
And that's in addition to the two property managers that are on site. So there's a property manager and assistant property manager and maintenance staff. And they also have support team from Tarantino headquarters.
Just on a personal note, were they able to retain the, the previous property manager who was on site?
Yes.
That's very good.
I saw that in the email, yes. Glad to see that.
So the, the work that we did as a city, we, we did the snow, snow removal, snowplow on two occasions and on three occasions, we did solid waste removal. And I think it was reported in the, in the newspaper that the trash was backed up all the way to the eighth or ninth floor. So.
Probably invoice at some point, I guess there's a, for the, the owner in foreclosure, there'll be some sort of a bankruptcy proceeding and I guess we can invoice them as to whether or not we get, get our money back.
So part of the discussions we've had with council were that we were doing the citations and as a way of recouping the time and effort that we have put into the, into the project. Then the, the, the judge has the discretion to waive some of the fees that we've assessed the property owner. And those fees are in excess of 30,000, I think, 34,000 is what you submitted in fees. So I'm hopeful that we'll recover, recover some of those expenses that we had on the property. However, I, in, the, the reason we need, I felt compelled to intervene and provide those services was to preserve the public health and well-being of those residents. Trash being backed up to the ninth floor is a serious issue, a public health issue. So I think it was, I thought it was the right thing to do. I informed council the need to do that and so, I'm hopeful we'll recover our cost, but I think if we don't, there's.
I'm just wondering, but thank you.
Appreciate that, appreciate that.
Proceedings, the foreclosure processes moving forward, the hearing date hasn't been scheduled for those foreclosure legal actions. And that's just one of the legal actions that multiple parties are taking against the property owner. So there's a lot of unpaid bills there that different parties are pursuing.
Thankful that, that the receivership was set up in a fairly timely fashion so that our residents could stay in place. And so it's, it's still in motion.
And we appreciate council's support on it because this is something new for the city, it's new for the county. And if we wanted something done, we had to do it ourselves and we pushed for it. So we appreciate all of council's support.
Hey, sort of talking about other code enforcement issues, you know, there's been reports in Old Green Belt around the Jane Apartments and around trash disposal, just sanitation, I guess in general, Roosevelt Center. So what are, how, how is that, I haven't heard any complaints lately, but it just seems to be a recurring project, problem with them placing their trash outside of the building and letting it accumulate on weekends, so.
So in order to resolve those issues, Jane Apartment Management went on and decided to do more frequent pickups, as, you know, as I advised them to do so. So now they're, they stated that they're picking up trash every day. They have someone going out there and picking up the trash. So it doesn't accumulate, doesn't overflow, doesn't hit the ground. So that's where the trash issue has been resolved. You know, the complaints that came in, Inspector Crump, he's the one who's taking the lead on those, those complaints. As far as I know, all the complaints that came through, through the city, he's addressed them and they've been corrected.
Very good. And similar complaints come in, you know, with Franklin Park, with the trash sort of accumulating over there and just in general, are, working with the management at Franklin Park, how, how is that relationship going along and with, with the trash issue? Is, is that something that you've received complaints about?
In general, I always communicate with Brad regarding the complaints that we received, whether exterior or interior. So we are in a, you know, contact communication with each other to make sure we address the trash situations, the complaints and things like that.
Just in general, so when, when a resident has a complaint, how do you handle that? How, how does that come in? How quickly do you try and respond? And what's the policy just in terms of resolving complaints?
Policy is we document all complaints that come through and then we send an officer. Normally they reply, respond to the complainant within 24 hours of receiving the complaint. So the next business day, we'll probably make contact, set an inspection. And depending on when the tenant is available for that inspection, again, we accommodate, but within 24 hours, we want to make sure we contact the tenant or whoever the complainant.
Policy as a city is to try and resolve complaints as quickly as possible, but to try and work with property managers to, to find a, a solution as soon as possible. But the policy on citations and whatnot, how, how do we follow up if there's a complaint and it hasn't been resolved? What, what's, how do we escalate?
If our code states that within 10 days, they must correct a violation. If they don't correct it within 10 days, it is to our discretion to see if they're moving along. If they're not, then that's, again, we issue a citation just to let them know, hey, you're not, you need to obey the, the problem. Once they issue the citation, again, most likely they will comply. If not, we continue to follow within every 10 days. They get a citation until we go to court and get what we call an abatement process in order for, you know, the situation to get repaired.
So cumbersome going to court. Do you usually, you usually go or does the individual inspector go or, and how often do you have to?
The issuing officer is the one that goes to court. You know, but most like, most of the times, you know, within the first citation, we get compliance and, you know, we get payment. Process where we can document everything in the system.
Any, any questions on code enforcement in general? I'd like to kind of move on to some other updates on projects, ongoing projects here in Greenbelt. And you mentioned working with Royal Farms Development. How, how's that coming along? When are they going to open? It seems to be moving along pretty fast.
Not long now. Biggest issue that they had, of course, was the historic site.
Yeah, damaging the historic, the foundation of the historic site.
Other sediment erosion control, you know, issues. But most of it now, again, due to the weather, right now it's raining, but they did get a temporary, you know, again, dry period where they, you know, bluestoned the site. So no, no longer is it, sediment erosion control issues.
Any other issues and is, is the project on track and, and when, when are they projected to, to open up?
Far as I know, the project is on track according to, to the plans that I'm seeing, but.
Matt, do you have one?
I don't have a, I don't have a, I mean, they had said 180 days from when they started the building construction, but I don't have an, an update. But perhaps at your next meeting, you can get a timeline from them, Gil, that we can share with council.
Okay, okay. And, you know, I did send over a bunch of questions just about updates. So the, the Buddy Attic Park, Parking Lot project, something that's been worked on for a long time and I know it was grant funded and at some point we had to kind of come back and ask for some additional work. So is, is it finished now? It looks great.
There's two components that remain unfinished. One is the interpretive sign, which we have drafts of and are running it through various reviews. It's going to just highlight the green components of the project, the funding partners that'll go near one of the main entrance, they'll go near the main entrance. I expect that to be completed very shortly. The second is a kiosk that was part of that project. So we're working with Mr. Varda, but we're also trying to be sensitive to the fact we're also in the master planning process of Buddy Attic. Those two components will be paid for with the program open space that council approved in the annual program. We did just recently, we submitted all the paperwork to close out our Prince George County Stewardship Grant and we've already closed out the state grant that we received for that, so.
Very good. I think it's a significant upgrade and I think the stormwater management impact is pretty substantial. There's more parking spaces.
There's more parking in the stormwater, really, they, they seem to be very, operating very well, so.
Also, it's more accessible for, for people that maybe have a mobility challenge, they can get a little bit closer in.
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yeah, it looks really good. My, I think at one point I was asking for these stops at the, at the parking, at the parking spaces because people were going in.
They've been installed, they were installed.
Right, I thought I saw a few, but I'm not sure if they're all.
The ones that were along the tree line, we, we thought they, they were necessary and then some along the pathway they're in, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes.
We have a response that's written. If you want to, I can put them up on the screen if that helps.
Yes, you're welcome to do that, yeah. Just going to ask a question. In your report, you mentioned working on the Bureau of Engraving and Printing, so can you give us a quick update? I know they're.
Let Ms. Fear go through the next few updates.
Certainly. So there's been a bit of a lull with the Bureau of Engraving and Printing staff. Last met with the Army Corps of Engineers, S H A and other stakeholders in late October to discuss engagement around anticipated off-site roadway improvements. This was in advance of an anticipated supplemental environmental assessment that we're expecting this spring that will also address those off-site road improvements and potentially some onsite. We're not 100% sure, but we are definitely on Army Corps of Engineers contact list. And so I expect that when we hear that, staff will review it, make comments and I imagine we'll bring those comments to APB and to council.
Supposedly, yeah.
Expected construction start date is fall 2024.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything different about that yet.
Yeah, the Vision Zero Plan, I was concerned, I know that we applied for, you, you guys applied for a pretty substantial grant.
We have not applied yet.
You've not applied yet?
No.
Okay.
So I, I, yeah, I, I think to clarify, so we're currently working on an application, yeah, for the, the federal U S D O T Safe Streets and Roads for All or S S for A, which is part of the infrastructure funding. There's two separate sort of routes that you can go with that, that grant. One is planning and demonstration grants. The other is implementation. In order to do implementation, you have to have a completed and certified comprehensive safety action plan, which we do not. So we are applying for planning and demonstration grant funding. And I think that will come up in the capital budget conversation later for a Vision Zero Action Plan, which would just be the title really of that comprehensive safety action plan. The application deadline that we are aiming for is May 16th. There is one more deadline, actually tomorrow is the first deadline. We were not aiming for that. We would not have been ready, but we're aiming for May 16th. We feel very confident about that, but should we not be awarded, there's one more grant deadline in this grant year in August, I believe. So we would have a second chance to go for it. If awarded, we'll then move into an R F P for a consultant. We expect that the plan would take between one and two years from awarding. That's what we were told by, by the federal government on some of their informational So yeah, and implementation hopefully of demonstration projects to accompany those, probably between one and three demonstration projects that we will evaluate.
Yeah, thanks for that update. There was a lot of talk at the National League of Cities Conference about this, the funding that's available and seeing the very large award that Mount Rainier managed to get, this seems to be, I'm not going to say low-hanging fruit. But I was talking to someone there at the MDOT table and he's a former colleague of yours and spoke very highly of you, Ms. Fear. So it sounds like you're on top of these deadlines.
Okay. Curious who that was, but I'm glad that I, that it was spoken highly of. Yes, so we are, we are excited, yes. And Mount Rainier did a wonderful job with their implementation funding. They were really ahead of the game though and had an action plan in place. So that's how they were able to go for that implementation funding.
Very good. This is encouraging. Will, will APB be engaged in this process at all, you know?
Yes. So we, I think I'd mentioned it in passing, but mentioned it formally and actually did a bit of a session on an overview of what Vision Zero is to bring them up to speed, why we were applying for the funding at their last meeting on March 20th. So they are aware that we're moving forward with this, that, that a component of creating the action plan, I believe, is to have some kind of a committee or task force that is a part of it. I don't think, I think it remains to be seen, you know, who is on that. I don't think APB comprises that entire task force, but that they would certainly be involved.
That makes good sense. One of the things in talking with people from, from Department of Transportation at the conference, they were asking, so with Prince George's County, they, they have a plan. So are we bound by that plan or do we have to have our own work within that framework somehow or are we independent from?
My understanding is that we are not bound by it because it's D P W N T and we don't have county roads within our jurisdiction. If it had been the planning department, that may have been a different case. I mean, they are working on a transportation master plan, but, but aren't, they don't actually implement. So my understanding is that no, we certainly support the Vision Zero goals for the county, but without county roads within the jurisdiction, it doesn't cover us for moving forward for implementation right away.
This might be a little bit more stringent or differ in some ways.
I mean, ours will definitely be very specific to the city and I think that will be the benefit versus being a countywide one. And, and my imagination is that, or my vision is that we'll include our state and federal, probably not the federal highways, it will include the state highways. So it will include Kennelworth and Green Bell Road. But I, encompassing something like the Parkway or the Beltway probably won't be included in the Vision Zero Action Plan because those are completely different types of roadways.
Very good, very good. Looking forward to that May deadline. So staying, staying on transportation and roads, wondering about the, in, in your memo and in the budget, you talked about the Hanover Parkway and Greenwood Cherry Lane complete in green and complete, complete street proposal, 90% engineering for that in the coming year. But I was just wondering if there going to be some tangible improvements on Hanover Parkway this year? And also more speculatively, with, with the Cherrywood Plan, how, how would the coming of the FBI actually impact our thinking around the structure on Cherrywood Lane?
Sure. So for Hanover Parkway, yes, we are going to be pursuing grant funding for 90% design on the off-road alternative for the shared use path. So it would be taking the shared use path from.
Good Luck Road.
From Good Luck, yeah. Well, technically from Good Luck all the way up to Mandan. But really it's Green Book, is it Green Book? Where it kind of ends right now. But at the same time. But at the same time, we have, you know, a very large list, the $300,000 list for ARPA-funded Ped Bike Master Plan improvements, and about approximately 20 of them, give or take, actually occur on Hanover. There were a number of corridor improvements that we identified, and they run the range from crosswalks, striping, and signage, LED flashing signage, and rapid flashing beacons at some of the crossings, sharows, completing sidewalk and shared-use pathway connections. There are a couple that we identified that we'd like to complete, and also installing some buffered bike lanes potentially in some of the wide shoulders. So as Terry mentioned, I'm going to be going out. We've had preliminary sort of desktop meetings with Public Works, but on Friday, we're going to go out and actually go around to all of the sites, including Hanover, so that we can get a sense of what our next steps are as far as contracting or in-house improvements.
When are you going to do that?
Nine o'clock.
Is it okay for people to tag along?
I, it is staff, yeah, because I, we, they gave me two hours, and I have $300,000 worth of improvements to go through with them in two hours. And I, we certainly could walk or drive them another time, but I think on Friday, yeah. I'm trying to get as much information squeezed out of them in that two hours as I can.
Just out of curiosity, so what's that going to mean over at the corner of Hanover and Aura Glen, where all the work is going on with the stormwater management pond, which I guess is going to be finished sometime soon?
The only, I mean, as far as Ped Bike improvements there.
Yeah.
The only improvement short-term that we have as far as ARPA there is actually identified that we'll probably need to get in touch with SHA is that we're missing a pedestrian signal at one of the marked crosswalks there. But my understanding is SHA maintains.
They maintain the signal.
So we may need to talk with them. But we don't have any other improvements specifically at that intersection, off the top of my head.
Just curious.
Probably weren't working within the right-of-way area. I mean, I will say, I believe that they are significantly behind schedule. The project was supposed to be completed March 2024. My understanding, they haven't even started Phase Two yet. I think they ran, just like we ran into a lot of issues with soils and so forth on the Greenbrook Lake, whenever I call it lake, everybody, but it was supposed to be a lake. So that project is significantly delayed. I haven't received an updated timeline yet.
So more conceptually, though, so with the Cherrywood Lane Complete and Green Street project, that's been in the planning for quite some time, so, but with the announcement about the FBI coming, that may have some impact on traffic patterns, so have you done?
Well, currently, we're really just holding on that project, and really, that's why we're focusing on the Vision Zero and Hanover Parkway. Certainly, local road infrastructure will be part of our discussions with the stakeholders as that project moves forward, understanding timing of the full interchange and so forth. The assumptions when we were looking at FGA and TOD development there previously was we were still going to be able to accommodate our project. But a lot of things have changed in terms of GSA, the FBI now being built by GSA, not having secured a TOD development yet with MADA, that I think will be in our interest to just place that project on hold, but be cognizant of it. We shared the plans with the team, the FBI stakeholder team, so they're all well aware of our planned improvements, looking for opportunities to perhaps implement some of them as a part of the project as well.
Okay, that's what I was wondering about. And while we're on the topic of the FBI, the connecting path between Greenbelt Station and the FBI, of course, is on hold, but what do you see as the next step for that?
Well, what I see as the next step is looking at, as we look at the local road infrastructure, as we all know the plan for the Greenbelt Stuyson Parkway to extend to the South Core, whether the opportunity is a complete green street there rather than a separate path. Well, MADA will not permit, as pretty much indicated, they will not permit the path. Currently, there's too many unknowns, if you will, with the location of the garage. It wasn't going, the current path was not going to work under the previous design for the garage and station. They're rethinking some of those, so it's a little premature for, I think, us to say that we can't move forward with the project, but we're having to take a step back, if you will, and see how we can accommodate that connection, whether it be through a trail, a redesigned trail connection, or whether it be through an on-road facility, facilities.
So moving on.
And if I may, I will say, we are in discussions, and actually have a meeting this week with our TAP funding partners, as well as MDOT staff that are involved in the FBI project to discuss how we perhaps can safeguard that TAP funding if we can, you know, as we, the project is in a holding pattern. And so we'll have more information forthcoming on that as well in the coming weeks, I believe.
Thank you, that's very important. Thank you. Hey, so moving on, the status of the Wayfinding Project and Gateway Signage.
Certainly. Here is your Gateway Signage. So we, we had a Community Legacy Grant, which I think, I hope, I just closed this week finally, that helped us with that wall, sitting wall and sign on Southway. We are currently in the process of a citywide wayfinding, wayfinding plan with MNCPPC through the Planning Assistance to Municipalities Program, or PAMC. The consultant there is the Neighborhood Design Center. And right now, our next scheduled meeting with staff is in late April, where they aim to present their draft research findings. So you all remember earlier in the year, we had the survey that was going around. That was sort of the last part of that information gathering that they were doing. We anticipate work sessions with council, the advisory boards, the relative advisory boards in the summer, along with broader stakeholder engagement, and hopefully a draft report from the consultant in the fall. And then we would, I believe we've mentioned in our goals to then potentially pursue funding to implement whatever the plan comes up with.
Okay.
I think the goal is that we will have projects in which we can request funding for, for the next fiscal year, so that's our goal currently, given the timeline of the project.
I like the sign they are coming into on Southway, and maybe there's some way we can get a smaller one and put it down there at the foot of Hanover Parkway and Good Luck Road. I think something down there would look really nice and would sort of signal to people that they've entered Greenbelt City. Welcome to Greenbelt.
As indicated, we have a welcome sign plan. We received grant funding for the Phase One of that plan, which was the Southway sign. We do have other signs designed. I think we want to revisit, we need to revisit some of the signs, state highway did not approve them based on their new sign regulations, but that is one location that we were looking at Gateway Signage for. And we're hoping that the wayfinding plan provides some guidance, if you will, to develop that more.
Those were some good-looking designs that we had.
Yes.
Okay, just a couple more. I think the next one is the Traffic Calming Studies.
Capital Bike Share.
Bike Share, yeah.
Actually, the update's not there, but I did hear for, oh, actually, that was updated version. Did talk, exchanged emails with the county, and they hope to have our station, the remaining stations, which we actually have one at Motiva, which Motiva fully funded probably four years as part of their agreements with the city. And then we have one at the Greenbelt Metro Station, and one, I say that with a smile because Jamie has been waiting for that and has to email the county every day. And one at Roosevelt Center, I mean, not Roosevelt, near Roosevelt High School. And their anticipation is installation by the end of the year. They currently are in the procurement process for the equipment.
Heard they got the funding.
They do have the funding, yes.
Which is good.
Yep.
Let's see, any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
I wanted to know if there was any update on the Main Street Grant. And I know that you had talked to us a while back about that, and I don't know if there was any update.
I believe Kevin Simpson was looking into that.
That's an economic development project that we're still working through.
Okay, and I guess finally, the Traffic Calming Studies in all Greenbelt.
Certainly, so that was also part of the ARPA Ped Bike Funding. We, staff has received a draft report that we are currently reviewing, so our next step is to circle back with the consultant, and we anticipate public engagement to follow in the next few months. So we'll be talking to them about, well, we'll give them our feedback, and then also talk to them about what those next steps look like. But they're pretty prom, it's pretty promising.
Parts, I see.
Lot of balls up in the air. So.
Fast-moving.
Fast-moving parts. Hey, so those were the questions I put out. Now, there's, there's a, let's see.
There's a few questions from Michael Hartman. One is, well, two, actually. What is the plan to make bus stops accessible to individuals with disabilities?
Well, all of our bus design is predicated, if you will, on Womata Bus Stop Guidelines and ADA Accessibility Guidelines.
And this.
I have a follow-up to that. We recently brought an action to council where we identified bus stops that did not meet that Womata standard, where there was parking in front of the bus stops, so there could, there was, there wasn't ADA accessibility, and we took action to remove those parking spaces to create those two bus stops, sorry, to allow those two bus stops to be more accessible.
And then the second question he has, and to add benches to stops that do not currently have any place to sit in essence along Ridge Road.
As we are looking at that as part of our ARPA planning, we, Public Works did an extensive survey of all of our bus stops and identified what amenities are provided at those and what not, what aren't. And we will also be looking at ridership numbers and need to make some decisions on where, where to really invest, if you will, our limited monies at. But we understand the desire to have buses, to have benches. I will say that we are also looking at some pretty significant bus changes being proposed by both of our operating agencies, which will impact where the buses go. So we also are being very sensitive to that, and will need to keep that in mind as we're directing this funding. So in some areas where I know their citizens would like to see some improvements, they may not see it in this first round, you know, this ARPA spending, but we do try every year to a $20,000 to $30,000 for bus stop improvements. And then, as you know, as Public Works does upgrades, street reconstruction, so forth, they also are cognizant of looking at the stops and how, putting in bus pads at a minimum.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Orleans, she had a question?
Yes, thank you. I don't know if anybody just didn't think to include this or as a data chart, or maybe the numbers were so small, it was not considered necessary. But I'd be interested in seeing a data chart reflecting the ordinance passed a couple years ago, how often our landlords in town have gone to district court seeking to evict one of their, or one or more of their tenants. And it would seem to be, who knows nothing, radically easy to compile and put on a sheet of paper. And similarly, I'm hopeful that can be done. Similarly, I don't know why there's not a data chart indicating the requests that code enforcement responds to. I don't know this to be the case, but I'm guessing off the top of my head that Franklin Park generates the most requests for code enforcement, but maybe it's the apartments I live in, I just don't know. But it would seem to be useful for residents, as well as other staff, and as well as council and city management, to know the numbers with regard to complaints made by tenants wherever it is that they live. So those are requests for two additional data charts, eviction requests and code enforcement.
There was, one of the attachments, there was a listing of foreclosures.
Correct.
Which I thought was helpful. And the number was not that high, but looking at it in terms of the management companies, it seems like most of them actually came from one, from CVI. Mr. Green, Greenbrier, and Charleston Village. But it's a total of eight, 2024, and that was down a little bit 2023. And there were a number of sales, which I guess is a way of avoiding foreclosures, emergency sale, so that was helpful. Eviction list, I don't know, do we get a comprehensive?
We are not, I mean, to be perfectly honest with you, other than one of our major developments, we are not getting notified, but we have no way to enforce that ordinance because we don't, we don't know who's, you know, we're not being notified, we don't get notified of evictions. The original purposes was that, and in the beginning, several, then more corporate and providing it, and we were providing that to KIR so that they could reach out for rental assistance and so forth. But even then, it was only a couple, if you will, that we were getting, receiving notices from.
Yeah, for a while there, the sheriff's office was giving us a large list of writs that they had received, but so many of the writs are resolved before an actual eviction, so it's another example of something that changes very rapidly in getting that information on actual evictions versus writs being served and people moving and doing other things.
A lot of times, I mean, the filing is often done also, my understanding, and Mr. Someone, I believe it's actually done in also the interest of the resident as well in terms of a filing, because then it does provide opportunities for assistance and so forth as well. So I know with working with Franklin Park with their reporting, which they were more than willing to do, they indicated that please don't, you know, use the number of filings against them. Most of them are all, are resolved, and they're, they're one way in which they can get the residents to work with them on identifying payment plans and resources that are available and so forth.
That's correct. Many of the emergency rental assistance programs that are available, they, one of the ways that they filter it, the most neediest, is that clients have to present that they are genuinely at risk of being evicted. And so getting that eviction process started and issuing the eviction notice is a way that many of the clients qualify for financial assistance.
Understand that. Let's see, Jay Davis, did you have a question? Comment? Probably should have said, Jay Davis, what is your question? Instead of, do you have a question? What is your question?
Well, yeah. Jay Davis, Greenbelt East or Greenbrier? First of all, I had a question about food trucks. We have not, I mean, even though they changed the law, the legislation in the county, we don't seem to have had a problem with food trucks or anything at this point.
No, we have not received any complaints or any inquiries about food trucks.
And the charts that was referenced by Mr. Orleans, foreclosures have gone down quite a bit since COVID. And also, I was amazed, the number of rentals that have gone down. I mean, obviously, we have the rental apartments and so on, those stay the same, but we also have single-family homes and townhomes that have been rented in the past, and there was a decrease of 100, which means that people are either staying and selling their units, perhaps, and now we have people who are actually owner-occupied rather than rental. And I think that is a good trend to have at this particular point with our single-family homes and our townhouses, that they're owner-occupied.
Well, I will preference, as a council member, we were inquired about the 100, the differential there. We, and we're not committed at this point to say whether that difference is a result of a reduction in rentals, or whether we discovered during the compilation of this report, some limitations in our software reporting. It's a custom report. We don't believe it's capturing accurately all of our rentals, mainly because of that some are in renewal process, some are, you know, are just licensed, and everything's about timing, right? So we are work, we're going to be working with the vendor, Mr. Cabrera, on trying to improve that. And once we've had the opportunity to do that, we can probably shed more light, if you will, on whether we're seeing a true reduction or whether it is a reporting issue.
Well, hopefully, that's a trend that continues, whether it's a software or not. It's a good, good trend. I did have a request. I know that people have complained about the traffic light signals at Hanover Parkway and Aura, whatever it is. I really hope that you do look at that. I almost got sideswiped the other day because of the angle of the roads. Hanover Parkway is a straight, but the other one is a weird angle when they come in. And so when you're waiting for your turn to come out of the, I got out of the post office on trying to make right onto Hanover Parkway. on trying to make right onto Hanover Parkway, the other side was letting out from, pardon, probably Martins. And they were making left turns. They did not care if you were going straight or if you were going right. They were just, you know, going straight into left, they didn't wait. And it could be quite a serious question. So it might be that you may have to have that one road goes and then the other road goes. You may have to change the signaling. And I know there has been a request for a left turn signal at some point that hasn't been there as well. So hopefully you look at that when you look at, because that's our, that's our traffic light, so we can control that. The other thing is, I'll be sending an email to council because I did listen in on the M M L Legislative Committee meeting. And I know that Greg Varda usually gives a report, but there were some interesting developments. But the main thing I wanted to say that is a new thing, and especially for those of us who are used to going to the summer convention and then signing up for committees. The deadline is much earlier. If you want to have an M M L committee, you have to have applied by May 31st.
Start the email.
Yes. But I just want to be sure because I know that we want to get on the Legislative Committee. So get your application in, otherwise it'll be just too late. The L A Rs are also due by May 31st, though council approval can be July 1st. But you had to give the L A R in and then you can approve it if you need to. But the rest of it, I'll send by email. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Jay Davis. So you bring up an interesting point and I'm curious, you know, Hanover Parkway, the traffic is very bad there. And I think the intersection of Hanover Parkway and Greenbelt Road is the most challenged intersection in the city of Greenbelt, just in terms, it's failing, it's a failed intersection, it's bad. But you know, the traffic pattern of people coming in and out of Greenway Center and the post office is just so difficult. And when was that designed? When did we put that in?
That'd be part, I believe, of Maryland Trade, I believe it was part of the Maryland Trade Center. Was that in the 70s perhaps? That would be something that we would have to seek funding for, for engineering, engineering consulting services for, where it's not something that we could handle in-house. So we can look at our, you know, funding availability and whether we would fund that with our consulting for F Y 25. I know it's been brought up a lot, that one intersection. I have to say that none of the intersections were failing when we did our Hanover Parkway Bike Way feasibility study two, three years ago. So they, you know, they weren't, they were, they were not failing, at a failing level. But, but I mean, certainly always room for improvement there because that is one of the more congested ones.
So I don't, it's dangerous, people kind of coming in and out of the bollards and in the parking lot. And there, I'm sure that there are, or I know there are fender benders and accidents there. So as we talk about Vision Zero, I would think that would be one section, one of several sections of Greenbelt that deserve some attention. Council, other questions? Please, silky po.
I just, out of curiosity, I'm hearing Chevy's is closing. Did you, did anybody hear that?
Yes, I heard, I heard that.
Is it true?
More on the last day or? Yes, that's what I read.
I'll reach out to the management company to verify that. I heard, heard it from other employees, but I'll get it direct from the source.
Okay, thank you. Be interesting to know.
Well, if there are no further questions from council or the public, I think we should probably move on to information items. But first, you know, I just really want to compliment and thank our Planning and Community Development Department for all of the good work that they do. There are just so many projects and such a lean, mean department that gets things done.
I'm blessed. I have a great team, probably I'd say the best team in Greenbelt government, but I'm a little biased. Very fortunate.
It's always good to have good, good help, right?
Yeah, definitely. So thank you for, and keep up the good work. Really, really appreciate you. And thank you for being so tolerant of council, asking so many questions and making so many demands. You know, it's the residents and we're all working together.
I also appreciate that you guys sort of woven D E I throughout your goals. That's, it's good to see that coming off through, through all of our departments in the city.
We're very, very excited and Jamie's really leading that. She has experience in that. One of my commitments I made to her when I hired her was that she could carry on some of that work. So I know she's excited to carry it on, so.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Summer, you got a
The fourth city's meeting was scheduled for April 25th. Berwyn Heights has a candidate forum for an important election. And they've asked us if we will reconsider a date. We've polled some council members in other jurisdictions and it looks like May 2nd may be a feasible date. So is that something that council wants to settle down as an alternative date and move forward? Okay.
I think it'll work. Everybody check their calendars and, because we need to confirm the dates that we can confirm our speakers or who we're going to invite. The 2nd, which is the next Thursday, basically.
The next Thursday, yes.
Thank you for circulating that information. I hadn't really, I wasn't aware that there was an election coming up. Do you know, when is the election in Berwyn Heights?
I don't know, but I
It's in May. It's like after, it's after they have the parade and then I think they vote the next week.
Really?
I think so.
So can Greenbelters vote in that election?
Really enough, as Mary Daly would say.
You could try.
Okay, well, if there's no further comments, let's go ahead and wrap it up. It's about 9:30. Thank you so much.
Thank you.